All right, Mayor and Commissioner. This is your Finance Committee briefing. This is our mid-year briefing, so remember we'll always do a status update too on the health of the organization as we've been spending for the last six months. And we'll also do some economic updating as far as forecasting what we're getting from the economic experts, as well as you will also hear the updates regarding the enterprise functions at the airport and water department. So I will turn it over to Ms. Jones to begin the briefing.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
So we'll go over the, we'll start with the statement and talk through some high-level summary before we go into the details. As you can see here, all revenues are trending higher. Revenues are $7.9 million or 7.5% higher than last year. Compared to budget, however, revenues are slightly under by $1.3 million or 1%. The largest revenue source, which you know, is income tax. Income tax remains flat compared to 2024. And we'll dive deeper into this in the next slide specifically for income tax. As for the other revenue categories, the largest increase is in the other revenue category by $3.5 million. As you can see, the revenue category is 225.5% higher than last year. And that has largely to do with the final transfer, cash transfer that we did this year from the Public Enforcement Fund. Last year, we completed this transfer in July. This year, we did the transfer in June. And this is the last year for that transfer. After this year, we do not have any cash balance remaining in that fund because we moved booking of that revenue into the general fund. And that's why you're seeing that in the funds and purpose category, which is up by $1.4 million or 502.2%. The other noteworthy category is EMSBs, which is up by 13.5% or nearly $500,000. And this is largely due to a 77% increase in the Medicaid rate, which went from $149 for transport to $259 at the start of 2024. But because there is a lag associated with the billing and when we receive the revenue, we are seeing the impact in 2025. Expenditures for 2025 were under budget by 2.8 million or 2.2% and were 7.9 million above last year's amounts. Personnel costs were $3.6 million under budget, but 4.3 million or 5.8% higher than 2024. In addition to the annual wage growth, timing of the police and fire recruit classes, as well as the police contractual wage adjustment, as you know, that occurred at the end of last year, and also the NATO-related costs are the driving factor for this increase. Contracts material and other uses were up by $600,000 compared to 2024. And this was largely contributed by the higher supplies and material costs that were needed for the NATO event, which were offset by lower transfers compared to 2024. And as you know, to allow for adequate time for procurement, most investment have been funded in the beginning of the year. One item to note in the investment section is the Your Dollar is Your Neighborhood investment with the renewal of Issue Six. As you can see, the Issue Nine/Issue Six line has an increase of 31.4%. And that's because of that increase in Issue Six from $8.3 million to $10.3 million. All right, we'll go into the income tax slide. So income tax, like I said, is the largest source of revenue and represents over 70% of total revenues as of June. Net collections through June are nearly flat and were slightly under budget by 456,500. Even with net collections being flat, one thing to note is that there were five Friday months during 2024. But for the first six months, there were three Friday months in 2024 as opposed to two Friday months in 2025. You can see that in that table below. The green and blue highlighted columns represents the five Friday months. And as you can see, for the first six months, we have three in 2024 and we have two in 2025. A five-Friday month is approximately $1.1 to $1.5 million. So with that in mind, 2025 is performing slightly better than 2024. In the chart left to you, you can see three of the six months have outperformed in income tax compared to last year. We holding collection saw a slight decline by 0.9% or $670,000 compared to 2024. The tax on business profits, which includes corporate profits and partnership, increased by 7.4% or $620,300. And payments by individuals are also up by 2.5%, although a small amount, a little over $100,000. All right, with that, Jeanette is going to walk us through the remaining revenue categories.
Thank you. So the first revenue category that I want to walk through is the property taxes and other taxes. And as you'll see, property taxes increased by 11.9% or just over almost $578,600. And part of the reason why we wanted to highlight this is because it's not that property values have actually increased because the last revaluation was in 2023. The county did a reval and that impacted 2024's actual receipts that we received. One thing to note when we started looking into this, every year we receive monthly advances from the county for our property tax revenue. And then by annually, they do what's called a settlement. So they'll like do a correction to bring us where we should be for the first half and second half of the year. The advances last year were more in line with the advances we had received in 2023. So they had not yet increased to match that new property value increase. But this year, our advances have actually increased. They're up about 16.5% when we compare to last year. So they are resizing our advances to align with the new, or the higher property values that were realized in 2023. So that's why you'll see the real estate performance up.
Yeah, that's, just for a second, you know, when we talk about the tax increases and et cetera, explain why it's a good thing more badly. I'm talking to those who are watching, maybe think that tax increases are bad, you know, or not good, what the case might be. Just explain what it means for us.
Oh, in terms of our revenue?
Yes.
Yeah, so one of the good things is every year, well, every three years, the county does a property revaluation to analyze if property values have increased. If there are increases in property values, we realize more revenue, even though we're achieving the same property tax we're needing. So it helps us kind of, because our expenses increase every year, inflationary costs increases. It helps us mean that gap a little bit without actually having like a tax increase. It's the valuations are increasing based on the valuation.
That's my one view.
She got the answer right. Good job, Jeanette.
And then the only other thing you'll see on here is the last year that we had the hotel watching tax was in 2021. And as you recall, the convention set up those transition over to the convention facility story. So probably by the time you leave us next year, that will fall off and will not be on here anymore. The next one, I don't know if you know about it, is fines and forfeits. So Abby kind of mentioned this, but you can see there was a big increase in the fines category. It is 502.2% or nearly $1.4 million. And you can see the big differences in that table at the bottom is in the public enforcement and public safety area. As Abby, Abby was mentioning, the photo enforcement revenue is now this quarter being deposited directly into general fund. Previously, we had a separate fund that I've set up and outside of the general fund where the revenue is being deposited. So forward now, we are depositing that revenue here. And if you looked on the statement, we are under budget a little bit in this category. And it's because of the primary of the postings. As of June, we had only received five months of postings, so it's like you would think through June. So that is a little bit of the reason why you have that budget variance being under everything you should be. All right, and then other revenue. Other revenue, if we include the transfers, we'll all talk about a little bit here. It's 225.5% driving that increase. And you can see it at the very bottom of that table is the transfer in. So that $3.7 million transfer in that you see is what Abby mentioned. The final transfer from the photo enforcement fund, that fund that lived outside of the general fund, where we're transferring cash into the general fund. This is the final year of the transfer, so that's why you're seeing that big increase. When we did the transfer in 2024, it occurred in July. So that's why you're seeing that kind of, it's not quite apples to apples when you look at the transfer line. Another one I want to point out is the cable franchise fee. It looks like it is down about $240,000, almost $241,000. That is another one that's due to the timing of the postings. It is a year later than 2024, and it looks like we receive more revenue. But in all actuality, we receive those postings every quarter. So 2024 received an extra quarter because we're planning catch-up from the end of 23. So 2025 is more in line with where we are in terms of the number of postings that we should receive every, every year. And then lastly, I want to highlight the refunds and recoveries line. That is up 57.8% or a little over $113,000. And that is due to Fire had a response to the severe, it was flooding Kentucky. They will have to ask for some reimbursement for that. Additionally, we have received our rebate for the P卡 expenses to get a little bit back for using our procurement card whenever we purchase supplies. So that is in the line of the refunds and recoveries. And then the last thing I want to highlight are some trends just in terms of the fire trends to revenue. So as we've seen in prior years, because tax remains the largest portion of general fund revenue, in 2025, it has actually dipped a little bit in terms of the proportion that is comprising a total general fund revenue. It is 71.2%. And the reason for that is that $3.7, almost $3.8 million transfer in that you just saw coming from public enforcement. So that is kind of evening that gap for all the other revenues, which if we looked at it in July, they would all be about 71% because you have that transfer in 2024. If you look at income tax, even just comparing it from last year, it is almost nearly static from last year, as Abby mentioned. But when we analyze income tax revenue, their growth from 2021 has grown 10.3% since 2021. And so that is that post-disease stimulus that we got that really increased the income tax revenue that we saw in prior years. And if we look at all of the other revenue categories, so this does include the transfer in, they are up 31.2% from 2021. Note, you will see as we talk about property taxes are driving that increase of about 46.4% due to the property reval that occurred in 2023. EMSBs, as Abby mentioned, continue to increase. As Abby said, partially due to the continual high runs that we're seeing, but also that net salary increase there of 60.5% from 2021. And then lastly, the local government fund, while we are receiving revenue this year, we have about $1 million in revenue that we're receiving this year. It is going down from where we were in 2021 by like $2.5 million. So we can see, continue to see that reduction in our local government fund revenue. All right, and I will give it back to Abby.
Thank you. All right, so we'll walk through the personnel and finish your trends next. Total personnel cost increased by 5.8% or $4.3 million when we compare to 2024. There are few factors for this increase. One being the civilian wages, which are up 7.2% or $1.5 million. And this is largely impacted by the early start of the police recruit class as well as the inflationary wage growth. Sworn wages are also up by 9.1% or $2.1 million. And this has to do with the police labor contract, as I mentioned earlier, which took place at the end of last year. And so we're seeing that impact this year. In addition to that, we also have an early start for the fire recruit class this year. And so that's also impacting the increase in the sworn wages. Sworn overtime is up by 18.1% or $635,300. This has largely to do with the costs associated with staffing of the NATO. And so that's why we're seeing an increase there. And lastly, the insurance costs are down by $1.3 million because we experienced that one health insurance, health holiday that we had planned for 2025 in June. Last year, we did not have a health insurance holiday. And so that's why we're seeing that decline in the insurance cost. Contracts and material, excluding other uses which are transfers, contracts and material costs were up 5.9% or $1.4 million when we compare to the same period in 2024. If we include other uses which are transfers, it's worth noting that 2024 included $812,000 of one-time transfers, and they were largely for technology projects, including security cameras and in-cap navigation system. Those are not present in 2025, which is why we're seeing less wage, we are, we are, we are. The largest increase is in the miscellaneous category. And like I said, this is primarily due to the NATO-related contractual labor agreement costs with other jurisdictions as well as the related supply that was needed for the NATO event. Management and public service contracts were down by 27.6% or nearly $1 million. This is largely driven by the timing of the RBC payment. There is one less payment in 2025 compared to 2024. Taxes are also higher by nearly $1 million. And we've talked about this a little bit before. This has to do with the higher real estate taxes paid to the Miami Conservancy District. The increase includes both, an increase to the existing assessment for the maintenance of the flood protection system and a new assessment for the capital improvements. Supplies and material category includes higher costs for the end-of-life computer replacement of the police department. And lastly, utility costs are slightly higher than 2024. This is largely due to the higher cost for street lighting maintenance. 2024 having one less payment, and these costs are then offset by a lower electric cost because of the ongoing AES billing issue. As for the big picture, when we look at the expenditure trend and compare 2025 to 2021 for the first five-year period, from 2021 to 2025, combined personnel and contracts and material have increased over $26.2 million or 34.1%. Personnel costs alone are 27.5% or $17 million higher in 2025 when we compare to 2021. And this increase is largely driven by the annual wage inflation, health insurance costs, new position, union grade overtime usage. For contracts and material, the increase is 60.8% or over $9.3 million from 2021 to 2025. The higher cost is due to the inflationary increases that we've seen in the last couple of years after limiting spending during 2020 and 2021. And because of this, as you can see in the chart in the bottom right, the personnel costs were bigger portion of overall spend during 2021 than it is now. With the addition of new services, including the court security contract with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, the spending mix has shifted in the recent year. That's what I'm talking about. Personnel were 80.2% of the total cost in 2021. Now they're 76.3% because we're spending more in contracts and material. All right, next, we'll provide you an update on the dating recovery plan. This update is due July 1st. The total of 60 projects are included in the recovery plan. The total awarded contract to date amounts to nearly $90 million. We've also added the MBE goal achievement section here in this presentation. The MBE goal amount is $22.5 million. And off that, we've achieved so far $21.5 million, which is a really good news story because it is a 96% compliance rate. And as you know, all of the projects are not nearly complete. And so as we move through the process, we will see that number grow. To dive deeper into the dating recovery plan and all of the subcategories, you can, one point I want to make here is that you can also go to the dashboard. The link is in the bottom of the page. The dashboard has even more detail. It includes every single contract that is in that subcategory. So if you wanted to dive deeper into the data set, then you can visit the dashboard on the city's transparency page on the city's website. As you can see here, the dating recovery plan is $102 million. And as I said, off of that, nearly $90 million has been approved by you all. And nearly half of that, or $44.6 million, has been spent to date. There are three projects out of the 60 projects that haven't been awarded contract, and they are in the improving neighborhood category. One project is associated with housing. And that grantee is in the process of reapplying for the historic tax credit. Planning Department and the project manager is working closely with the grantee to make sure that we're keeping a close eye and working with them to make movement on this project. The other project is for the MBE compliance tool. This tool will support the city's engagement diverse business and comply with the prevailing wage requirement. And we are in the process of procuring this tool. The project manager is working with various departments to make sure that we are communicating with one another in procuring this new tool and the utilization of this new tool. And lastly, we have the safe and secure housing. You did hear at last week's housing presentation that this process is underway. The contractual agreement with the hearing officer has been executed. But that is a, it's an ongoing cost, it's an operating cost. And so that's why it's funded out of the operating fund. What's funded from the DRP is the actual tool that we're going to procure to make sure that we are keeping track of the cases. And it will also provide automation for mailing of the notices. All right, so as the manager mentioned, this is the new mitigated dialogue. As a result of the 2014 power amendment that instituted our policy budget, the City Commission adopted Section 49B, 2014 of the RCGO that prescribes, prior to the commencement of the budget process for the coming fiscal year, the city manager shall present to the commission his best report on the current budget point. In addition to the regular monthly update covering the general fund management statement and the mid-year update, we're also including a review of the revenue circuit breaker in this presentation. And we are, as the city manager mentioned, are also going to review the departmental budget variance. All right, so starting with the circuit breaker. Standard deviation, just a little bit of reminder from statistics class, I can't say the word, back in school. Standard deviation or the empirical rule, which says percentages are based on a normal distribution, which means data will follow roughly a normal pattern. Revenue circuit breaker signals when revenues are significantly below their historical averages. For our model, our average or the mean, we are using previous five years from 2020 to 2024. There are some, these are the same revenue categories that we saw earlier. And so we look at the revenue circuit breaker for the one standard deviation and two standard deviations for each individual revenue category as well as revenue as a whole. In the normal distribution, about 95% of the values will be within a two standard deviation of the mean for our purposes. One standard deviation is a warning signal and two standard deviation indicates a corrective action should be taken. And as you can see here, base collection is receiving a fail for both one and two standard deviation. This is largely due to the timing of billing and when we receive that actual revenue. So once the revenue is received and we catch up to the normal amount, we expect the circuit breaker to turn green. The other category is the other intergovernmental revenue, which has triggered fail at one standard deviation. This revenue category includes the NATO revenue. We budgeted for this revenue in anticipation of receiving the revenue. However, we haven't taken the receipt of this revenue. So once the reimbursement or process, we expect this circuit breaker to also turn green. And then lastly, we have the fines and forfeits category, which includes the photo enforcement revenue, as Jeanette mentioned. As of June, we have received five payments. We expected to receive six payments. And so once the revenue catches up, same with the other intergovernmental, this revenue circuit breaker will also turn green. In the last five years, only two years where every revenue category has seen the pass. And you can probably guess what those two years were. They were 2021 and 2022, which were the strongest revenue years in the recent history. Excluding 2020, other years, normally we see about two to three revenue categories either receive one or one and two standard deviation where they have failed. And so this is not out of the, out of the ordinary. Just reminder, in 2020, if you can recall, this whole chart looked like someone had taken a red marker and marked all over it because only three revenue categories had a pass. So this is our departmental budget variance. At the mid-year point, total general funding expenditures are 52.2% of the annual budget. Most departments are performing within the expected variance threshold with the exception of Fire, Information Technology, Police, Issue Six, and Income Tax. The variance experienced by Fire and Police Department is largely due to the higher cost at the end of its overtime for the first half of the year, which is largely related to that staffing of that NATO event. IT's variance is outside of the expected threshold, and this is largely due to the timing of payment for costs related to technology maintenance. 46% of IT's budget is in contracts and material. And this contracts and material is largely spent towards technology subscription services and maintenance costs. And as you can imagine, some of those are one-time payments, which occurs earlier in the year as opposed to a monthly payment. And so that's why we're seeing that variance in the IT department. And then Issue Nine Investment and Income Tax are experiencing a large variance. Issue Now, this is because of the earlier funding of investment that we do every year. And so that's why we're seeing that big variance of almost 100% for both of those categories. Okay, so as for, as for the 2025 preliminary year-end projection, overall, the revenues are performing slightly under budget but remains above 2024 amounts. Income tax remains steady despite one five-Friday month with gains from business profits and individuals. The revised revenue forecast is slightly higher than the original projected forecast. And this is because, like I mentioned, we have added in that revenue form for the NATO that we will get reimbursed from the state. Corresponding expenditures have also increased for the same reason. Expenditures are expected to remain elevated in the second half of the year. And this has to do with continued staffing challenges associated with safety overtime. But we do expect to end the year under budget. At mid-year point, we expect to end the year with a balanced budget and a 1.5 to 2.5 million use of cash reserve, which is slightly higher than the originally planned amount, which was $1.2 million. Continued, given inflation, rising personnel costs and growing economic uncertainty, we will continue to closely monitor the budget, not only throughout the year, but also the future years. All right, so this is Lemon's data chart, the employment. And as you can see, the employment dipped to 331,700 jobs because of the pandemic. That was the change from February 2020 to April 2020, where we lost 60,900 jobs, which was 15.5% decline in the job base. And this was due to the pandemic. Since then, we've not only recovered. Since then, we've not only recovered from the pandemic job loss, but we've actually added jobs. There are an additional thirty-seven hundred jobs compared to the pre-pandemic loss. And so the new peak, if you will, is three hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred. All right, as for the Mayor, you really do want me to repeat that? All right, so our new peak is three hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred jobs, which is thirty-seven hundred more jobs than the pre-pandemic peak, which was in February of twenty-twenty. All right, so the first chart shows the job opening rate for the United States. The national job opening rate, as you can see here, is four point six percent. And the Ohio's job opening rate, and this data is as of May, is four point seven percent, which is right in the middle. And you can see that in the legend below. Four point seven percent is exactly right in the middle. The chart below shows the CPI in the Midwest region. The CPI for all items was three percent higher than June of twenty-twenty-four. Although higher, the growth has been somewhat steady. And you can see that it's been hovering around that three percent since June of twenty-twenty-three. Over the year, prices for food rose three percent and energy decreased by zero point one percent. And this is largely due to the lower prices for gasoline, which was then offset by higher costs for electric and natural gas. If we exclude food and energy, the CPI for all other items increased by three point three percent. The chart at the top right corner shows the real GDP by industry group. And as you can see, real GDP has decreased overall by zero point five percent in the first quarter of this year. And this is according to the third estimate that was released by the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis. Here, you can see out of the twenty-two industries that are listed on the chart, fifteen saw a decline and seven saw an upward trend. The overall zero point five percent downward trend is primarily reflective of an increase in imports, a deceleration in consumer spending, and a downturn in governmental spending that were partially offset by increase in investments. And lastly, we have the unemployment chart, where we can see the state of Ohio, Montgomery County, and Dayton. And so if we were to compare ourselves to June of twenty-twenty-four, June of twenty-twenty-five, we do see an increase in unemployment. Dayton went from five point nine percent to six point four percent. Montgomery County was four point nine percent, now it is five point four percent. And same with the state of Ohio, also saw an increase. If we look at just one month change, the one month change is also noticeable for all three. Dayton saw a three percentage point change. Montgomery County saw a three percentage point change. And state of Ohio saw actually four percentage point change. All right, so for the highlights, the general fund's largest revenue income tax is stable from June of twenty-twenty-four to June of twenty-twenty-five. The seven point nine million dollar revenue growth from twenty-twenty-four is largely attributed to the local government fund revenue, where we've met the prior year obligations. The depositing of the full enforcement revenue into the general fund as well as the transfer of the remaining cash in the special projects back into the general fund. Personnel costs were four point three million or five point eight percent higher than twenty-twenty-four, but remains under budget. Year-over-year growth was due to the budgeted wage increases, which is offset by one from the holiday. And this personnel cost also had an impact from the the growth in personnel costs is also slightly impacted by the NATO event. Contracts and material and other uses were up by two point five percent or nearly six hundred thousand dollars, largely driven by, again, the NATO event, the supplies and material that were needed to have that NATO event in city of Dayton and fewer transfers from miscellaneous expenses. At the end of June, overall, uses exceeded sources by eight point three million dollars. And this is because of the flat revenue, income tax revenue that we've seen so far, the growth in personnel costs, and the early funding of capital investments. So we will continue to monitor the budget throughout this year and beyond as the cost for personnel, contracts, and materials are on the way year-over-year. Any questions?
Questions?
All right, I think we're gonna have aviation come up.
Good afternoon. I'm Gail Turner, Director of Aviation. I got Anna Stamper with my division manager. Admin Finance, so we're gonna go through a briefing on the second quarter. Thanks. Well, just the first thing first, we'll talk about employment. So we had, we were moving up in the right direction for the train, so about two point seven percent. We had a second quarter of three hundred and three thousand passengers increased. Not as much as we'd like to see, but we still moved in the right direction. So our airline revenues, they were down just a little bit, about a hundred thousand dollars or two point four percent compared to last year. And we'll get into that detail a little bit later in the presentation. Now, airline revenues, they're up about one point three, about twelve point nine percent compared to twenty-twenty-four. A lot of it is our parking. We had an increase of about five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in our parking. It's due to a rate increase in just higher uses. Rental car revenue comes from parking. Rental car concessions, they're about six hundred and seventy thousand or forty-one point five percent. And I think last time we were here, we talked a little bit about it during the pandemic. We lost a lot of employments. And there's a clause in the agreement with the rental cars that they don't have to pay MAG. It's dropped. So over the period, the three or four years, there was a point where nobody knew exactly what amount they were supposed to pay. We did a settle-up, and finally got all that done first of the year. And now we saw a huge bump in revenue. But that was due to the settle-up of rental cars from the pandemic. Concessions, we're seeing more, more revenue from our concessions, such as our news and gift and food and beverage in the terminal, about ninety-two thousand or sixteen point seven percent due to increased sales. Total sources up about one point two million or seven point one percent compared to twenty twenty-four. And, but however, we are four hundred and seven one thousand or two point eight percent higher than year-to-date budgets. We're doing very good there. Total uses have increased about one point three million, about eight percent compared to twenty-twenty-four, but are still seven hundred and thirty-five thousand or four percent than the year-to-date budget. Personnel costs of about four hundred and ninety-five thousand or six point nine percent, but still remain about one hundred and twenty-six thousand or two point two percent below the year-to-date budget. Capital project costs up about one point four. And this, again, it's a one-time deal. We transferred early in the first quarter, so that's gonna show up all year long. That's gonna throw off, because we didn't do anything last, the previous year. So it's up about one point four million dollars. Contracts material, the other uses are down. Hundred and thirty-seven thousand and one point nine, or about six hundred and nine thousand and seven point eight below the year-to-date budget. The numbers are pretty good, so I'm gonna pass it over to Anna.
So looking at operating revenue, airline revenue is down about a hundred and eight thousand dollars or two point four percent. That's also because of the annual settlement, which we will talk more about in the next slide. Non-airline revenue, which you can see in the graph, is steadily going up since two thousand and one, increased by one point three million or twelve point nine percent. And that's because of rental car revenue and increase to the CFC rate, increased parking and concession usage. And all revenues of about one point two million or eight point one percent. Moving into airline revenue, you can see the terminal rent is down about forty-four thousand dollars or one point six percent. That's because we have slightly lower rate per square foot than last year. We have consultants that calculate this for us using our operating expense. And if we keep our operating expense low, we can give some of that money back to the airlines. So that's why you're seeing a lower rental rate. Landing fees are up about twenty-eight thousand or one point six percent. And yes, that's correct, they're both one point six percent. I checked the math several times. But that's, that is correct. And they're up about one point six percent, and that's because of increased employments. We've had some larger aircraft come to the airport. We got, went from a fifty to seventy-seater Airbus. So because of that, we have more landing fees. And then the annual settlement, or settle-up, if you will, it's what's offsetting the revenue, about ninety-two thousand. This is the settle-up that happens with the airlines every year, as we talked about last quarter. It's not truly a bad thing, although it may appear that way on paper. It just means we're keeping our operating expense lower, so we get to return some of that money to the airlines. In the past, we've just done credits, but we decided we were just gonna go ahead and issue checks this year. So that's why you see nothing in the past couple of years on the chart. Okay, looking at non-airline revenue, we're up about one point three million. Revenue is up five hundred and thirty-six thousand or twelve point seven percent. That's because of increased usage and higher rates. Rental revenue is up six hundred and seventy-eight thousand or forty-one point five percent. And about five hundred and eighty-nine thousand of that is due to the settle-ups that Gil mentioned with the rental car agencies. But even without that revenue, rental car revenue is still up. Concessions is up about ninety-three thousand or sixteen point seven percent. That's because we have increased hours for business, so we are, we have higher sales. Property taxes are up about two hundred and fifteen thousand or forty-two point nine percent. And that's because of the taxes we collected in the second quarter. We did talk about this last time around. Our property taxes for one particular parcel at Duaba went up two hundred and eight thousand dollars, and that's just for the first half of the year. But we did, we were able to bill that out, and they did call me and ask, is it correct? And I said, yes, you can look it up on the tax website. And then they called me back and said, yes, that's correct. So they, they did pay it. So we did, we were able to collect that money. Ground leases are up about a hundred and ninety-three thousand or eighteen point six percent, which, because of tenants we have at the airport like Sierra Nevada and Joby. And then other non-airline revenue is down four hundred and fifty-two thousand or twenty-four point eight percent. This is due to an error reporting fuel flowage fees that happened last year in June. It was corrected in July business. It was an issue with the units. Somebody put them in wrong, to give this person credit. It was the first time we were billing premier for fuel fees. So they may not have realized that the number was too high, and we didn't recognize it. So it did get fixed, unfortunately, it was an error. We had a discussion, we talked about how you're gonna put numbers in banner, you gotta triple-check them and then make sure that they make sense. If something doesn't look right, double-check it, triple-check it, so.
Premier is one of our FBO tenants, our fixed base operators at the airport. That's Premier, they took over for Stevens Aviation last year, so they're a new tenant. So a lot of things had to get switched over to the new tenant.
Moving on to expenses, we're starting with personnel. In total, expenses up about four hundred and ninety-six thousand or nine point six percent. Wages are up four hundred and sixty-five thousand or fourteen point four percent. That's due to acquiring the garage, which we didn't have before, being more fully staffed in general, and then overall wage growth. Overtime is down sixty-three thousand or twenty point three percent. And that's because, again, we're more fully staffed, so we're hanging out less overtime. Insurance costs are up slightly, but that's actually offset by the health insurance holiday that Abby mentioned. And then fringes are up about eighty-three thousand or ten percent, which just follows the increase in wages. Moving over to contracts and materials, travel expenses have actually decreased a hundred, they've actually decreased about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand or one point nine percent. And that's a couple, there's a couple of reasons for that. Management contracts are down two hundred and eight thousand or twenty-three point two percent. And that's because our parking vendor had a name change, and we had to get it into the system, which delayed one of the payments. Marketing is down two hundred and twenty thousand or thirty-eight point six percent. And that's just because of the timing of payments to the Chamber of Commerce. Professional services are down two hundred and seven thousand or eighteen percent because we are more fully staffed, we don't need as many temporary employees as we had in the roles last year. And then taxes, as I mentioned, are up two hundred and thirty-three thousand or thirty-four point seven percent. As we mentioned before, the building down at Duaba, the taxes blew up, so, but we did collect. Facilities are down two hundred and sixteen thousand or eighteen point one percent. And that's because of bills from AES and IGS. We're having issues with them billing us incorrectly. They're billing us for supply when they are not supposed to be billing on the AES bills. So we've been told not to pay until we get all of this corrected. So we are working on it. And then finally, other contracts and materials are up about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that's just because of, it's in an account called Economic Development Services. It's related to the ARPA and CRISA credits just pulling through our accounting system. And you can see it makes up most of that variance at three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Moving on to employments, as we mentioned before, employments continue to steadily go up. We're up to three hundred and twenty-three thousand employments for year-to-date June, which is two point seven percent higher than the last time this year, or last year at this time, I'm sorry. And just for comparison, in June of twenty nineteen, pre-pandemic, we were at four hundred and forty-one thousand employments. So we're about three quarters of the way back to where we really should be. Employments are just growing at a very steady rate. As you can see, almost all the airlines have employments up in the chart.
Yeah, Delta, American Airlines is our number one carrier. Delta and United are running neck and neck, but it looks like United is going to exceed Delta far as next quarter. Because they're bringing, United's bringing in larger aircraft. As Anna mentioned earlier, we're seeing Airbus is now coming into United next in October. United will have a seven thirty-seven going to Chicago, so that's giving us more capacity. So we're gonna start seeing, and I think that United will be our second-largest carrier here next quarter. But both those, all three of our legacy carries are doing very well. Legion is doing well. Also, you see that all the carriers are increasing stuff. Little slightly with American, and that was due to a lot of the government instability in the first quarter with travel, so particularly to DCA, California, so those cities kinda took a hit. Things slowed down a little bit. Things are kinda leveling off. We just met with American, their couple last month, and they said things are getting better according to destinations. And just to wrap up, our sources are up about two point, one point two million or seven point one percent compared to twenty twenty-four. Employments have grown by two point seven percent. Our airline revenue is up by one point three million or twelve point nine. Our total uses are up one point three million, eight percent compared to last year. Expenses are up four hundred and ninety-five thousand. This is the staffing growth. On that you hear, the other use increased by a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Capital project expenses up one point three. They're probably ended in two with a hundred and eighteen thousand debts that we're processing. Again, we talked about that capital project transfer. Rental car concessions combined with a modest increase in contracts material. An apartment we're gonna continue to monitor. And the cost savings measure, we're looking at everything we can to increase our revenues at the airport. So we're probably gonna continue by some things, but anyway. But we're looking at a lot of things to raise additional revenue, collect different revenue, more revenue from particularly general aviation-type aircraft. So you'll see that next quarter. Other than that, we're doing quite well.
All right, questions? Mr. Tchernov, some questions?
I don't, I don't have any. I just wanted to congratulate you all, because again, to your point, right, you all are doing well. So thank you, including the fires staff.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fent, some questions?
Yep, I'm good.
It's great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail and Anna. We will call up the water team to run through water and sanitary sewer funds. Esha and Kenny. Kenna. I looked right at Kenna and said, Kenny. She was the last name.
It's okay, it's all right. Esha, Kenny. And Kenna.
Turn that off.
At least Kenna's not here, though. So hello, my name is Esha Kenny. I'm sure she's mayor and city manager. Okay, that's that done. So I can actually talk about the numbers. So I'm here to talk to you guys about the water funds. For second quarter of 2025, we are performing as expected. So I'm just gonna kinda go through here, give you guys a brief summary, and then I'll go into more details on the water side. So again, we're performing as expected. If you look at city water fees and revenue, you can see that we're coming in where we should be in the second quarter of 2025. We're slightly off, but very close, if you mean in city revenue. If you go over, we are performing, our revenues are coming in at about nine percent or one point three million dollars over what we forecasted. If you go over to other jurisdictions, that's also coming in slightly close to what we expected, at about eight point, it is very close to that. We're probably coming in at about twelve point three percent above what was projected at about one point five million dollars. Something else on the water side, I'd also like to point out is that our lime cells are up about twenty percent or about three hundred thousand dollars as compared to last year at this time. If we go down to our usage, we are probably sitting at about five point, five point one percent higher if you're looking at our personnel. And then our contracts and materials are up also about one percent, point one percent. But we did not utilize our cash reserves on the water side. So as we go into the industry, we're up on the water revenue side about seven point seven percent or two point four million dollars. This is due to city customers coming in at about eight point nine percent, and this includes our rate increase of about nine percent. If you look at other jurisdictions, those are up as well, and this is due to increased usage in some of our service bases in Montgomery County. And this is also including additional billing also in those areas from about three accounts, that we see additional billing. If you look at lime cells, like I said, those are up. This includes an increase of about thirteen percent, and this is what we do using that, working at the Producers Index, where we compare what it was to produce lime this year and 2023 as compared to 2024, and then we do those rate increases. And we'll do the same thing when we set out our rates for 2026. If you're looking at other revenues, those were down, however, but this is actually a good story. They're down by about thirteen point nine percent, and this is due because we had less shut-offs in the year ago. Our other revenues, those are down, but this is more due to a bill timing issue. So hopefully, we will be up when we get to our next quarter. If you go over to our expenditures, our personnel prices, costs are higher, but this is due that we were able to fill some positions. However, we're still experiencing vacancies when you look at our 24-hour operations, so those were still up, and that's about eighty-four thousand dollars as compared to this time last year. But there was a decrease due to the holiday, which the airport is, and also adding. But this is also offset by some of our contracts and materials, where we're down about point one percent. And this is due, again, to we're not being billed by IGS, and we're thinking through the quarter, we might see those increases in that end. As you go on to our expenses, so the decrease you saw from the utilities are offset by additional sludge costs, and this is due to a rate increase of about five percent. And you also have that, also the offset in contracts and materials. And this is due to the fact that we were able to complete our huge generator project installations that we've been talking about for a few years. So if you're at Ottawa Yard, you'll see these two big train-looking boxes. Those are our generators. So that is a great, a great story for us when we talk about resiliency and redundancy. We also had some other expenses, which were some facility improvements, and this is more looking at our physical security in those areas, so we upgraded some of the fences, the card readers. Again, this is making sure we're secure and complying with some of our security. Now, we're gonna go on to the other side of the house, which is where we are looking at. Again, they're performing as expected. We predicted we would see about eleven point four, and that's what we actually saw. It's up just a little bit. You saw about thirty-two thousand dollars increase in what we saw from our city revenues. And then if you're looking at other jurisdictions, we're probably seeing a projected value of up about one point five million dollars, which is good. If you look at, you compare us to 2024 as compared to 2025, we're at about seven hundred thousand dollars up, or six point five percent. And then if you look at other jurisdictions, it's one point four million or about nine point three percent. But this is offset where we have about an eight point five percent decrease. Now, when we go over to our uses, our expenditures, you're gonna see that our personnel costs are down for sewer side, also contracts and materials, but this is offset by some capital equipment that we did receive. So again, as we stated, we have an increase in our revenue for our industry side, and here we have city customers, we've got about six point five percent. This includes about a five and a half percent rate increase from outside jurisdictions. This is up as well, but this is also some higher usage as well. So you have a rate increase and higher usage. In the deal, bill timing, we received about three more bills on the sanitary side. If you're looking at other revenues, this was up as well, but this is due to the RNG project, which we're mentioning there. So that's how we have that increase on that side. But this is also down, if you look at our revenues, if we're looking at some of our suspended solids, as we didn't have any customer upsets in their treatment, so we didn't bill for the suspended solids. But we did have one for higher biological oxygen, which is related to their treatment prices for some of our industrial customers. So when we go over to look at our expenditures, again, as we said, we have some lower costs as compared, and that's where our wages are down. And again, with our wages being down, that's gonna cause our overtime to go up, and this is due to the fact that we're trying to fill those 24-hour positions. Insurance is down again, and this is due to industrial expenses. Our contracts and materials are also lower, but again, this is due to IGS billing timing. Hopefully, this will catch up when we get to the third quarter. Some of our professional services are down, and again, this is due to bill timing, but also a one-time liner project that we did not do. If you look at our sludge, though, however, that is up, and this again is due to irregular cost CPI rate increases, which we saw on the water side as well. And some of this was offset, again, by some of our material fees. So we were able to complete a project at our Westbrook pump station, where we would finish those pumps and motors that came in later on in the second quarter of this year. So again, fourth quarter, our performance is moving higher compared to our second quarter of 2024 as compared to 2025. We're seeing an increase in lime cells, and we're also seeing some renewable gas for our sewer side as well. So those are two separate revenue streams that we are seeing increases. Personnel costs on the water side is up, we're filling positions. However, we're not filling enough to offset the overtime that we are seeing. The sewer side, we're having lower costs there, and that's due to the vacancies, which is also causing the overtime on the sewer side to be up as well. Contracts and materials declined, but a lot of this is due to the IGS filling situation that we're seeing. And both funds did not utilize their cash balances, which is what is expected when we're in the second quarter of this year. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Again, thank you very much. I'm happy to see there are increases in the water as well as in the renewable gas, so we're seeing.
I was just curious, with the reduction in shut-offs, is that a change in policy or practice, or are our residents doing better?
So, well, it's partly part of the three- or four-year effort we've been making in making payment more accessible for our residents. So when we went to the move with our new billing vendor that allowed people to pay their bills at a CVS, they could pay cash, they could pay in their neighborhood, we wanted to make sure that that, that was available. So we, we believe that that's a lot of what's happening here, and folks have gotten the ability to get online easier and faster and pay their bills. Payment plans can now be done online, and so just making it a little easier and more accessible for our residents to pay their bills has, has aided in that a lot as well.
Awesome. Congratulations.
No, I'm good, too. Just, yeah, congratulations, they're exciting, especially with the line. Appreciate it.
That's all we have?